Good evening. The League of Women Voters of Pocatello and Pocatello Community Media welcomes you to this forum featuring the candidates running for Pocatello City Council seats four, five, and six. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization which seeks to promote the informed and active participation of citizens in government. The League neither supports nor opposes candidates for office at any level. Instead, it works to provide educational opportunities to the voting public to ensure a well-informed electorate. League is always open to new members, both men and women. There are membership forms available should you be interested. There is a candidate information table to my left as well as information regarding the bond proposal for Bannock County Jail Facility Addition and Behavioral Health Care Center. The League of Women Voters is on Facebook. Anyone is welcome to comment on our posts, but please be aware that all posts must be relevant to League positions and will be monitored by our Facebook administrators. Tonight's forum for the candidates will be streaming live on Pocatello Community Media, that's cable channel 56, and online, and then tomorrow will be available on YouTube at Pocatello Community Media. Except for authorized news organizations, no other videos are allowed, so please not only turn off your phones to avoid interrupting noise, but do not video any part of this forum. Our National League of Women Voters procedures require that we inform you that no part of the League of Women Voters of Pocatello-sponsored video production may be used in advertising or in any other way to promote a candidate or issue, nor can it be used in any format other than its entirety. We'd like to thank the city of Pocatello for providing this meeting space and also thank the Pocatello Community Media, who has been televising our forums and public meetings for many years. And now I would like to introduce Margaret Gagnon, who will be our moderator tonight, and introduce our panel and describe the format for tonight's forum.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you.
With us this evening, we have the candidates for Pocatello City Council seats four, five, and six, starting from my left to my right. And over the next hour and a half, I hope you have a great opportunity to get to know them. Our process tonight will be that they will each introduce themselves. They'll have two minutes to share their goals, their qualifications for office, starting again on my left, going to my right, and the rest of the time will be dedicated to questions. Some were submitted via email through our Facebook page, and then we had additional questions come in last night that were pertinent to this race as well, so we've added those to our set of questions. But most of all, we would really like to get your questions from the audience, so please raise your pen if you need a card, an index card or pen. Volunteers will come, get that to you, and also pick up your questions. We review them, make sure they're legible. We combine, if there are duplicated questions, we'll combine them together. So if a question has already been answered, a part of it, you'll note that we're editing for those purposes. After the introductions, the candidates will have one minute to answer each question. When each candidate has had an opportunity to respond, they will have a second opportunity to address that topic if they care to. That's a 30-second additional statement, and we encourage them, if what they're about to say they've already said, they might want to just reserve that so we can get to more questions. And then at the very end of this evening, each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks. Thank you, candidates, for joining us tonight, and we will begin with introductions to my far left with City Council seat four, candidate Danny Wells.
Hello, my name's Danny Wells. I was born right here in Pocatello at the Bannock Hospital that they recently tore down. I had a tear to my eye when that happened because it's where I was born. Grew up in Aberdeen as a country boy moving fast. At the age of 15 years old, I sustained a spinal cord injury in an automobile accident that touched me as a partial quadriplegia. Within six months, I had learned to walk again through a lot of work and willpower and was able to graduate with my class. After graduating from Aberdeen High School, I started going to ISU. At the age of 20 years old, I decided to serve an LDS mission, which was a valiant mission. During the mission, I was a zone leader. I trained six Greenies, and I was also presiding over a small branch in Lake Charles, Louisiana. After I returned home, I worked at the bank in Blackfoot West One, West One Bank in Blackfoot, where I was licensed and bonded to be trusted with $100,000. Then I started my ISU career, which I was around '94 when I started going to ISU, and I've had almost 215 credits of a broad spectrum of knowledge from counseling, social work, criminology, and criminal justice. I didn't quite get my PhD yet. It's just been, every once in a while, you bump into some roads and you have to travel and do the things that you have to do. A few years ago, I was volunteering at a gym called Beyond Barriers Fitness, and the gym was focused on helping disabled people understand that once something happens to you, you don't have to give up, you don't have to quit. You can still have goals, and you can achieve those goals and move forward with your lives. And it was a very promising and encouraging thing, and that's one of the things that brought me to the political arena. For the past couple of years, I have been a political activist, standing up for the citizens of Pocatello and speaking out for their rights.
Thank you very much, Ms. Adamson.
Thank you, and I wanted to take a moment to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. I think it's great that you put all of the effort and the energy into having this available for us so that citizens can get more involved and make educated decisions. I have always been interested in government, and I've always taken my responsibility as a voter seriously, but I was never directly involved in government until a little over a year ago, and at that point, I learned of a vacancy on the city council, and that's when I was appointed to this position. And I really would like to continue my service on the city council. I feel like we're moving in a good direction here in Pocatello, and I would really like to see that continue. Another thing about me is that I am the youngest member of the city council right now, and I am the only female on the city council. And I think it's very important to have that diversity on the council and to have all of those different perspectives and be able to look at things from different angles and different viewpoints. I have two school-aged children, and so I really want to make sure that we make decisions that are in the best interest of our future generations. I also have managed rental properties since 1998, and then in 2004, I started my own business here in Pocatello, and that has since grown. And my husband and I recently just hired our ninth employee, and we also provide, you know, income to our employees and our own family, as well as many private contractors and vendors here in town. As a business owner, I've learned many things that have helped me on the city council and that I think are a benefit. One of them is the ability to work with people who might be difficult. Another thing that I have learned is that it's important to be efficient. Another thing that is a skill I bring to the table is to be open and to look at, to be open to different ways of doing things and not afraid to try new ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lurick?
I'm Linda Lurick, and Heidi said a lot of things that I agree with. I also am interested in government and have been for a long time, and I'm running because I strongly believe in the importance of public service. I do believe that working together, we can make a difference in our community, and I want to be part of that. So I would like to serve my community. I would consider that an honor. I came to ISU, or I came to Pocatello to teach at ISU many years ago, and I've had a long career as an educator, which I think is an important contribution, but I wanted to become more actively involved in government and in my community and serving my community. So I bring to the table a lot of different skills. I have a long career, as I said, in education, but also in nonprofit organizations. I serve on many different boards. Currently, I'm the board chair for the Idaho Organization of Resource Councils. I am the branch president for American Association of University Women. I'm a board member of Zonta International. Those are just a few. There's a long list there, but as I said, I believe in public service. So I think I have the qualifications for this position, and I'm just eager to serve my community. I also agree with what Heidi said about diversity on the council. I'd love to see another woman on the council. I have a different perspective maybe than some of the men, and so adding to that diversity and bringing fresh ideas and a fresh perspective. Mainly, I want to enhance our economy, and I want to, at the same time, preserve Pocatello's unique identity. And I'll work with all the people of Pocatello and listen to them and address their concerns in the best way that I can.
Thank you. Councilman Ohr?
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you to the League. Thank you to you as citizens of Pocatello for taking the time to come here this evening. Apparently, we didn't draw as much of a crowd as the mayoral race last night, but, you know, we're not rotten cheese either. With the decision by Councilwoman Eve and I to leave the council, that left an opening for a seat. I was really happy that the mayor chose Mrs. Adamson to fill that position, because I agree it brings a different, somewhat, perspective. Now, me, early on, I had no interest in government. I probably skipped government class in high school more than most people put together, but I found out the once I went to college, I'd take government there too, so it might have been a good chance to pay attention. But I grew up in Pocatello, Alameda. I was part of that annexation. I've raised my children here. I've gone to school here. I've got a master's degree from Idaho State University. I have been a problem solver, I was a problem solver, for a major agriculture company for some 25 years. I do the same thing now. I put together projects, evaluate them, and make sure they come in on or under budget. That's important to the dollars of the citizens of Pocatello. I understand the technical. I understand the negotiating part of it, to get consensus because you're one of six. And so I've worked hard, I've worked harder, and will continue to do so. Thank you, and bring friends to the polls to vote.
Thank you. Mr. Cheatham?
Thank you, Margaret. And a special thanks to all the members of the League of Women Voters for producing these forums. My name's Rick Cheatham. I've been a resident of Pocatello since 1977. I moved here from Kansas, and it didn't take long before I fell in love with this community. I've had employment opportunities in other places over the years, but I've chosen to stay in Pocatello because of the people, the area, the opportunities, and the weather, the spring, summer, and fall. By degree, I'm a radio newsman. I have a bachelor's degree in broadcast journalism from the University of Kansas. That's a profession that, like so many others, has almost disappeared in our electronically-connected world. My employment in Pocatello has included radio, auto sales, and credit unions. I've been heavily involved in the community as a member of the Pocatello-Chubak Chamber of Commerce and several wildlife conservation organizations. I'm on the executive ward of the Pocatello-Chubak Chiefs, and I am the incoming president of Portinata Valley Pride. I'm a candidate in this election because, from my first reporter job, I've been fascinated with the process of city government. I've worked as a reporter in three different communities, and each one was different but still the same. The sameness where city councils dedicated to making their community the best they can be. Being a member of a city council is more than just attending two formal meetings and a study session every month. It means researching and understanding issues, attending meetings prepared to discuss and take action. It means talking to citizens and being accessible to citizen concerns and explaining council actions. It means acting as a liaison to city committees. All this takes time, and it's time I've not had in the past. But I recently retired, and now I have time that I can dedicate to being a member of this city council. Back to you, Margaret.
Thank you. Oh, I just got that. Mr. Chodhury?
Good evening. Thank you very much, League of Women Voters Association, and especially Margaret. Margaret has been hosting this for several years now, and she does an excellent job. Thank you very much. I would like to thank each one of you here for being here this evening. You know, you all had a choice of either coming here, or staying at home with your family or your children or somebody into something differently. But this tells me that you have a concern. You value this city. You value what goes on in this city, and you value me. That's why you're here. Thank you. A little bit about myself, I migrated here about 20 years back from India, and if you have seen me, over here, I think I know about 30 people's names, because I have been involved in the community since the day I came over here. It was a struggle when I started here, with $6 jobs, starting to learn how to speak English right. People couldn't understand me. But today, I'm proud and privileged that I've got several businesses that I've done in Pocatello, and I'm a very successful businessman today. I speak good English. I hope you can understand me. If you don't, please raise your hands up. And I'm eager to help out the city of Pocatello. I know our city is doing great. There's nothing negative about it. We are all working towards the right direction, but there are things to be taken care of, the things that we are missing. Our children, who need some safety, what happened in Las Vegas. We have to take those things as consideration and think about it and see what we can do to make our city more better, more safer, and more entertaining for children, and more education-wise, more connected with the world. So I'm here to be one of your city council members, and I'll be learning with you. I'm not an expert, and as soon as I get elected, I will be communicating with you and learn with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Yes, thank you again to the League for sponsoring this forum and for their continued commitment to nonbiased informing of the voters. I was born and raised in eastern Idaho. I moved here from Idaho Falls in 2010 to attend Idaho State University. I've graduated with my bachelor's degree in psychology, and I now work at Idaho Central Credit Union, pursuing my certification as a financial counselor. My training as a psychologist has taught me how to listen to concerns at a deeper level than just hearing what's being said. And my day job is to review budgets, propose amendments to limit wasteful spending, and help people live within their means. And now I'm ready to use this skill set for public service, and that willingness to serve the public, I think, is the ultimate qualification of any elected official. I'm a firm believer that you deserve a government that is founded on the principles of public service and integrity. I believe that you deserve a city that invests in itself, and that is why my goal as a city counselor will be to refocus our attention and our budget on projects that directly benefit you, the citizens. Now, it is no secret that I am the youngest candidate up here. But if we want to achieve the potential that I know us to be capable of, it is going to take a leader with a fresh perspective and a whole lot of energy. It is a long journey to get from where we are now to where we're going, but together, I know we'll get there.
Thank you. Mr. Zundel?
Hi. My name is Elton Zundel. I have had the opportunity of running the business with my father for 30 years here in Pocatello. I have been trained by the very best. First, my father, Dwight Zundel, by Bebe Hatch, by Jack Roach. Bebe was the vice president of General Electric. Jack Roach was the vice president, Edgar Johnson. At the same time, I've been able to attend Idaho State University, where again, I've been trained by the very best. Dr. Stephen Kenne in constitutional law and land use law. Dr. Don Reading.
A little louder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Dr. Don Reading, Dr. Scott Benson, both in economics, who do economic forecasting for the state of Idaho and other businesses. In this process, I've heard for many years that Pocatello is the world's worst place to do business. Well, the final statement must be just as true. We must have the greatest businessmen and women in the world because they do work in Pocatello. I have lived in Chicago. I've spent time in San Francisco, London, Paris, and of all the cities I've seen and been in, Pocatello has the greatest potential of all of them. We have seen this in just recent with the opening of Siphon Exchange. When the leaders get together, the educators get together, the people are there, great things happen in this city. Pocatello has been the gate city, and with the help of ISU...
Thank you, Mr. Zundel. We will begin with our first question, and it will start with Ms. Adamson, and that question is, "Recently, the council voted on a moratorium on outdoor signs. The proposed changes in the ordinances affect a broad spectrum of our community and businesses. There was little opportunity for input. Would you, as a councilperson, how would you, as a councilperson, engage the community in more feedback, and what is your position on the proposed changes?"
Yes, we do have an existing sign ordinance, and it recently came to our attention that there were some issues that maybe needed to be addressed or clarified. And so that's why the moratorium went into place, was to give our planning department staff an opportunity to look at that and to get feedback from the community and to work through that process, because it's not fair to people who are wanting to have sign permits if there's some confusion or ambiguity. And I think I've looked at the current ordinance, and I've looked at some of the proposed changes. I still think there are some changes that need to be made to that draft that we're working on, but I'm confident that we'll be able to do that. Pocatello is not the only community that has had to deal with this. We're just, we need to do our duty to keep with the times and make sure that we don't have situations...
Thank you.
That minute goes fast.
Ms. Lurick?
So as Heidi said, it has come out recently that we need to look at our ordinance and see if there's changes that need to be made. There was a meeting last week with the sign vendors and some real estate people that are affected by the sign ordinance, and I attended that meeting and heard some interesting points. So there's kind of two main sites to this. There's the residents of Pocatello who are concerned about signs in their neighborhoods or affecting where they live, and then there is also the business owners and the sign people and real estate people, and how the signs affect their business. So I think the ordinance can be reviewed and compromise can be reached. I think there's a way to make everybody happy, mainly keeping the signs out of residential areas to minimize that negative impact. But there's things that can be done, and they've proposed starting groups of stakeholders to start a conversation and figure out how we can improve the ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Orr?
The decision that was made at that time, I believe, is wrong. I'm not going to back away from that decision, and it's a sensitive topic here because the way it was handled and who's on the dais. If we want to look at it, we need to take a look at it, but we need to give that notice that we're going to do it, rather than denying an individual the right, and that individual met every criteria on the city ordinance. So an individual comes in, meets all the issues and agendas with the ordinance, and then are told, "No, you can't do it." So if we're going to look at it, let's look at it in a way that is fair and timely, rather than having a person come in with a sign and say, "Nope, you're done. We're going to do a moratorium." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cheatham?
Well, this process is just beginning. I was at the study session that Michael was just referring to, and there was an informal vote taken to see how people would feel about moving on. The vote was 4 to 2. I was also at that sign contractors' meeting that Linda talked about, and everybody there was opposed to the ordinance. Every realtor, every contractor in the building was opposed to some form of what's been proposed at this point, and I agree with their opposition. If I'm elected, the way the ordinance is written today, the way it was proposed, I'd vote against it. But it needs to be considered. This committee that's been, informal committee that's been put together, I think is the way to go. Get six or eight people together, let's talk this, let's address it. The future of billboards is electronic. Rish Kirkah made a great point in that informational meeting about that, and this city needs to address that ahead of time.
Thank you. Mr. Chodhury?
I'm in this business of signage, and what the city that I've understood while being in several meetings is, I believe, the right hand did not know what the left hand was doing. So we have some documentation that is written, but there was an if and buts. It seems our council or the members in the city did not read the documents correctly in depth to make a decision that they made the decision that happened several months ago. I would appreciate that the council members and the city council, as because they are the city officials, as because they are tax-paid employees, need to do their homework and follow by the rules. What they wrote down is what we have to implement on, and if we do that, anybody should be approved with their proposals.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
To start, I'll make it clear that my opinion on the moratorium is that the council may have completely thrown the baby out with the bathwater on this one. But I would like to address the more important question that was asked, and is, "How would you engage the community for input on this ordinance?" This meeting that Mr. Cheatham and Ms. Lurick have addressed was an invitation-only meeting for sign contractors within the city. Every person in the room was opposed to the sign ordinance because every person in that room had some sort of vested interest in the signage business. That's not transparent. Public comment will not be invited on this new ordinance until after the revised ordinance has already gone before the city council for another study session, and it will be put on a public hearing on the next city council meeting after that. This process would be the first thing I would reexamine as a city counselor.
Thank you. Mr. Zundel?
First of all, looking at the city ordinance, I see a very hard issue before the city council, that of making it so businesses are able to get their information out, also so that they can still keep the aesthetic value of the property that's around. This isn't something that can be decided overnight. It's needed with lots of input from not only businesses, but the general public that it affects.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
I'm glad this was brought up because I also attended the meeting. Thank you, Linda, for inviting me. I didn't know about it. She's the one who told me. I showed up, and I listened to the citizens intently. One of the big things that the citizens did do is a guy said, "This started last spring. We had this problem last spring," and some people were crying a knee-jerk reaction, and what I think happened is that it had momentum last spring, and the city hall was going to look at these signs and fix the issues and everything, but it got kicked down the road. The transparency of government didn't exist. There was no planning. There was no developing. There was no follow-through. And what I've noticed is, for the past few years, this is what's happened with city hall, is they've lost their way. An issue like the signs, it gets a hot point for just a few minutes, everybody forgets about it, and then they go about the new thing. So it's not a brand-new issue. It should have been taken care of last spring, and it was just barely addressed again.
Thank you. Does anyone care, Ms. Adams, Ms. Adamson, do you care to make an additional comment?
Yes, I would. I just wanted to address the concern about the council not reading documents in depth. I read through every document that was presented to me at that meeting before the meeting, and I listened to all of the testimony that was provided at the meeting. There is a provision in the ordinance indicating that signs should not have adverse effects... There is a provision in the ordinance indicating that signs should not have adverse effects on adjacent properties. And because of that provision, that was my reason for voting in that instance. I understand that the sign did meet zoning requirements, but there was that provision, and there were many people that said...
I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry too. Thank you. And Ms. Lurick, did you care?
I would just like to reiterate what Stephen said. I think we need to be more transparent and involve the community more. It is an issue that does affect business owners who are also community members, but it affects residents as well. So all stakeholders should be involved in the discussions, and everybody should have a voice, and that way we can reach a solution that works for all of us.
Any additional comments, Mr. Orr?
Yeah, I don't think, and I know firm the fact that the city council's not lost its way. I can tell you of the ones that I work with, that they do, they're more than do their diligence, to the point that they're a pain, and sometimes to the staff that has to listen to them, okay? But what I say here is that you look at the number of people here tonight relative to the registered voters. We should be having as many as Stephen's Performing Arts Center, not here. You look at the, we did not have one person come to our budget.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Cheatham?
Yes, I wanted to dispel the myth that that was a private meeting held last week. I got the information about it off of an email from the city. And if you're signed up for those city emails, you get those meeting notices. It wasn't a secret meeting among contractors. It was those who cared showed up, and those who were involved in what's happening within the community.
Thank you. Mr. Cheatham?
I just wanted to add one last line on that, is, based on our conversation last spring, one organization was approved, all the signs they've applied for, except one sign was declined. But one organization got all the signs that they've applied for, and they've even also got, one that got declined on Thursday night was approved, another one on Friday morning. Thank you.
Mr. Conway, do you care to have...
I do. I did not say that the meeting was held in secret. I also get emails from the city. I never received that email. The person leading the meeting from the Planning and Zoning Commission said that each licensed contractor for signage had been given an invitation for that meeting. It was not open for public comment, despite the two or three of us who were not sign contractors in the city having been there.
Any additional comment, Mr. Zonda?
Speaking of open meetings, as we look here, many people had the opportunity to attend this. I've sat in on city council meetings before, and it looks like we're in Death Valley. Nobody's here. They had the opportunity, but they don't take that chance to get involved and let people know their feelings. And we need to invite them to express their feelings more fruitfully.
Thank you. Mr. Wells, any additional?
Yeah, there was another citizen at that meeting, and he was a vendor, and he absolutely didn't even know about the meeting until right before it happened, and he said he found it out from a colleague, and he brought the proof to show that he wasn't even told about it. There's another man that was a vendor, and he said that the signs are progressive. We are progressing. Our technology is progressing as a society, and our signs, our billboards and everything have to progress with that.
Thank you. This next question will first go to Ms. Lurick. As a member of the council, how would you address the payment in lieu of taxes issue? So regarding the possibility that the water and sewer fees that the city had collected as payment in lieu of taxes, they may be required to refund them?
Yes. And so the Supreme Court ruled, I guess it's not final yet, we don't know what the amount is going to be, but there's potential that we're going to have to pay back a large amount of money because we were collecting taxes in a way that we weren't supposed to. And so, first of all, I think we need to always be very careful that any procedure or policy that we put into place, that it isn't breaking rules, that we're doing things the way that we're supposed to. So that is a preventative. I would make sure before we start a new policy that it is something that is allowed and is not breaking any rules. The other part of that is how we would pay back the money that we might have to pay back. And so I think, as was mentioned last night at the forum, we should be putting money aside for situations like that, that we have a fund, that it's not such a big hit when it comes, that we don't have money, so...
Thank you. Mr. Orr?
How do you tell the citizens of Pocatello that a mistake was made years ago, and now if the citizens, the citizens have to pay that back? So if we threw a bond over here, and to pay this over here, it's like taking money from one pocket and out of another, okay? That's how this is going to work. This was a pilot that was started long before, maybe even before Mr. Conway was born. But that's water under the bridge now. We have to deal with it, okay? Now, think about that. Take money out of one hand and put it in another, and then give it to the city. That's how it works, okay? We've got to make sure things are compliant, and we do that. We search and research now, okay? And so, but again, the city's in the best shape it's been since at least 2003 that I know of. We'll talk about that later. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cheatham?
Well, that water and sewer fee issue, you've got to remember, but that was a whole different time and a different council and mayor. It was done many years ago. Any comments about repayment of that fee over charges is premature until we know the final decision of the court on the amount of the repayment necessary, and if they set a timetable under which it must be done. When that information's available, then the mayor and council will have to develop a plan to include repayment in the budget. I watched this last year as the budget was developed, and I gained a lot of respect for the Pocatello CFO and the Finance Department, as they helped guide the council and mayor through the process of making budgeting decisions. There may need to be some hard decisions made to resolve this issue in the future, whenever we finally know what needs to be done, but I'm confident that those right decisions will be made.
Thank you. Mr. Chudhury?
This really started during Roger Chase's time, in 2006, I believe. I really do not have much depth of information about this, because I am not involved with that very much, and I don't know much about it. So I don't want to share anything which I don't know and just fake it. So I would like to get into the system, understand what's going on, and then would like to communicate with the community that where we are, what had happened, and this is what we are planning on doing in the days to come in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
In the state of Idaho, it is illegal for any sort of municipality to implement this sort of local options tax that is an additional tax on what they've already been permitted to charge. More diligence from the city council and potential external auditing could have gone a long way in preventing this problem from happening. It didn't happen, we now have a problem. We need to make it the highest priority to rectify this with the citizens, and that is in both budget and attentional priority.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a bold statement. I think the city should appeal the Idaho State Supreme Court. I think they were wrong in their decision. As you look into land use law, the city has the right to extend fees and charges for people developing land. This is something that I don't feel that the State Supreme Court has put the thought or effort into making the decision that they made.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Unfortunately, right now, two years ago, when I had run my first election for being on the council, the city was in debt by $2.5 million, and that debt had been kicked down the road for years. Unfortunately, once this information comes out, whether it's $4 million or $30 million, if we stick with the status quo of what City Hall has done, is that debt will just continue to be kicked down the road. It won't be addressed directly, and there won't be anything done to it. We'll just wait for someone else to solve it for us, and we can't do that. As a city council member, we need to attack it head-on, find a problem, keep the citizens informed exactly what we're doing with a plan, develop the plan, follow through, and make a progressive, forward movement.
Thank you. Ms. Adamson?
Right now, we're working with our finance and legal departments to look at possible courses of action, but as others have already mentioned, it's a little premature to know exactly what we can do until we have the final ruling. You know, the Supreme Court has remanded it back to the district court, so we need to wait and hear from them. I do want to make a point that that money was not just taken from the citizens and put in a bucket and hidden in a back room at City Hall. It was legitimately used on services to the citizens of this community. So what Councilmember Orr says about taking out of one pocket, you know, if you get a refund on your utility fee, it's got to come from somewhere. And so that will present some challenges that we need to address, but I'm confident we'll be able to come up with the best solution to that with the help of our finance department. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments?
I would like to just make one additional comment. Several people on the podium up here mentioned that this is an issue that came up long before any of the current council members were serving, or even our current mayor. And so it is an inherited problem that the council now needs to face. So I think our focus should be on moving forward and how to, being proactive and coming up with a good solution to solve this problem.
Thank you. Any additional?
There's just not enough time, but that $2.5 million has nothing to do with what we're talking about here relative to the pilot, okay? And people have to understand that money within the city governments can't just be taken from left hand to the right hand, okay? There are laws by the state of Idaho that dictate where monies can go. We can't take money out of the street department and put it in a general fund, because it's dedicated for doing streets. We can't do it with the water department, okay? So we have to have decisions. It's easy in the chief seats to make those statements.
Thank you. Mr. Cheatham?
Just one quick comment. I have a friend who used to work in the finance department here at the city. I ran into him the other day, and this topic came up, and he told me that in 48 of the 50 states, what the city of Pocatello did was legal. So perhaps this issue needs to be addressed at the legislative level.
Thank you. Any additional comments? We will move on then. Mr. Chudhury, Conway, Zonda, and Mr. Wells. Okay. This next question will go first to Mr. Orr.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome. Do you believe that a vibrant art, so public visual performing arts and cultural scene is important to the economic growth of Pocatello? And if so, how and what role would you play in supporting it on the council?
Well, we have an arts council. In fact, we have one of the members here on the arts council this evening. He may have wrote that question. Thank you. The diversity makes a well-rounded individual, makes a well-rounded community. We need to support that. We do. In fact, I think one of our council members here tonight also sits on that arts council, all right? So we have a direct link to the arts council and many others. There's over 24 advisory boards within the city. I served on the PDA. I think that's a great place to start if you want to get into city government. You'll get a good education on how it works, what's allowed and not allowed. But the arts council has, needs to be a benefit. I mean, we don't nurture those feelings and those desires in people, whether it be the arts, the sciences, or whatever. It's a great place to live. I came back to Pocatello and thank you.
Mr. Cheatham?
Well, you know, I think we can't ignore the arts. It's being done too much in our school system between the arts and music, and those kinds of programs are being cut. We're lucky, because we have Idaho State University in this community, and it's a great resource to supplement what isn't being done in other places, whether it's art, or it's music, or it's whatever, whatever you fancy, even the craft shop at ISU. It's a great resource. I think that the city, in whatever way they can, should continue to support it.
Thank you. Mr. Chudhury?
Art and culture really is a million-dollar question for me, because my daughter is 100% in art. She was a distinguished young woman over here, and she's right now at NYU, doing her bachelor's in theater. I think culture and art is one of the most important subject matter in a city, which brings people together internationally, and we have to work towards it. We do have a choir festival, which we have every three years. And then we have a great symphony that we have been running for several years now, and thank you for the local community for your support on that. But absolutely, yes, art and culture would be my first and priority that we would work on towards to see how we can grow that on a regular basis, so we can bring the community together.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
I agree. I think the arts community in Pocatello is one of the cornerstones that makes our city what it is. It's part of our identity. I think it needs to be protected, and I think the role of a city councillor on protecting the arts is really to lead by example. If you want the city to invest in the arts, show that you, as a leader, are willing to invest in the arts as well. We have many shows going on right now. I know Into the Woods is going on up at the Palace Playhouse. I think it's a statement for someone in a position of leadership to go out and support these different art projects that are happening within the city.
Thank you. Mr. Zonda?
I would agree with the statement that Idaho State University is one of the greatest resources that we have here in town. It invites us to protect the different cultures that we have here. And through the years, those cultures have weaved a beautiful rug that we have here in Pocatello, different than anywhere else in the world. We have a little bit of everything, and that's what makes Pocatello, Pocatello.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
I agree with everybody else. Arts and culture has to be defended and respected, and one of the greatest things about the arts and culture is it benefits the citizens directly. It is something that the citizens can participate in, we can participate in. My love for ISU goes further past the football program. The academics at ISU, because I was a student there for over 10 years, we have to protect the arts and the culture.
Thank you. Ms. Adamson?
I'm glad you brought up the arts council, and I do think that that plays a very important role in our community, and so I wanted to say thank you for your service on that committee, and all you do to promote the arts in our, in our community. Of course, the arts and a cultural scene are very important. We always hear, we talk so much about the need for good-paying jobs or for environmental protections, but the arts and a vibrant cultural scene are just as much a part of our quality of life as these issues are. So I think it's very important. What I would do to promote that is to support and attend events personally, myself, and to share that news with other people in the community, to get them out and participating in those events.
Thank you. Ms. Lurick?
So I agree with everything that's been said so far. Arts and culture are a very important part of the community, and having a vibrant scene. Heidi said a phrase, which is exactly what I was thinking, it's a quality of life issue. Jobs, our economy, all of those things are important, but, you know, the arts and culture provide this extra benefit in society. So they enrich the community and enhance it in a way that I think makes our lives here better. I told you already that I came to teach at ISU. What I didn't tell you is what I teach, or what I taught. And I'm a cultural historian, so I have a PhD in arts and culture, and I absolutely believe that that's an important part of our community. And so I would do everything, and have done, everything that I can to support the arts and culture by, you know, bringing in and organizing events, bringing in speakers, organizing exhibitions, all kinds of things. So I would do everything I can to support that.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Mr. Orr?
Yes. In the room here, we've got several members who serve on, lay as on boards. We've got the HPC, we've got the arts council. We have people involved now. This is a diverse city. It's a lovely city. We have great people here. And with that, even supporting ISU, my wife and I donated personally to the paws last year, so the paws could go back down on the asphalt. I even, I haven't offered to sign one, so people could run over my name. So we love our city.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
No.
Mr. Chudhury, Conway? No? This next question goes first to Mr. Cheatham. There was some sentiment, it appears, that some public officials have been dismissive of residents who have questions about the Siphon Road-Northgate development. How can the city council ensure that citizens are both informed and that their voices are heard in this effort?
I heard those comments last night at the mayoral race, and frankly, that surprised me a little bit. The Northgate thing hasn't been... The Northgate thing hasn't been a secret. It hasn't been tremendously discussed so far. And I think there's good reasons for some of that. I'm sure there were non-disclosure agreements in place between the city council, the developers to make sure that when the negotiations were going on for that land and those businesses that are proposed to come in want to be protected so that the prices aren't driven up unreasonably. I first heard about this almost a year ago, but just trickles and whispers around town about what might be going on. I don't think any of us really have any, at the groundbreaking, I had a chance, saw a fellow sitting there by himself and started struck up a conversation. He was one of the developers. And he told me that in his pocket, he has signed contracts for that project. And I think as soon as this becomes a little more firm, we will hear when the timing is right.
Thank you. Mr. Chodery?
I believe the Northgate extension, number one, it is definitely 100%. It's a positive, welcoming extension for our city. Yes, it is falling towards Chubbuck, but Pocatello will benefit out of it, guaranteed. As far as the community knowing about it, I would have appreciated if the newspaper would have covered a little bit more in depth so that, yes, our community would have been informed a little bit more so that we could have all been there during the groundbreaking. It is a huge deal. A lot of money is being spent and we are expecting a lot of good jobs coming in. Yes, we might not have it, as I have agreed with you, not in Pocatello, but we might have the people who comes here might reside in Pocatello. That would be an economical growth for Pocatello. It is going to be an excellent production for us and excellent growth. Somebody did mention yesterday that that might take away downtown's pride or downtown Pocatello. I don't think so.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
I think it's a good point that we're going to have a lot of people who are coming to Pocatello potentially with this Northgate project. I think we need to focus on the people who are already here first. I was, I also heard these comments at the mayoral race last night and how it was offered that information would be provided at a public meeting on October 26th, when the groundbreaking on this project happened last month. That is not a replacement for transparency. The citizens of any body should be part of the decision-making process on any of these kinds of big decisions. They were not involved.
Thank you. Mr. Zundel?
I think, again, at this point, we're seeing people look at things from accounting view rather than an economic view. Yes, there is some cost to Northgate. It doesn't come close to what it's going to do economically for this area. As you look through an economic view, you can see the process farther down the line and the growth that will happen for Pocatello.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Northgate, I think is a great idea. As a citizen, I looked at it. And as a citizen, I would have liked to have known a six-month timeline of what's going to happen. That's what I would have liked to have known as a citizen, just what's going on. I've heard the comments too, that it's going to pull away from Old Town Pocatello. I don't think so. I think that Pocatello can have its cake and eat its stew. We can still promote Old Town Pocatello. I lived at the Whitman, which is a diamond in the rough, if no one's ever been there. Old Town Pocatello is fantastic. I don't think it will suffer from Northgate. The citizens of Pocatello, citizens of Chubbuck, working together, moving forward, it's going to help us both. And Old Town Pocatello won't suffer. We'll be able to figure it out. But I would have liked a six-month timeline ahead, in advance as a citizen to know what's really going to happen.
Thank you. Ms. Adamson?
The comments that have been previously made about the need for confidentiality are exactly right. In situations like that where you've got different interests and people involved, you can't be spreading that out there to everyone in the community or else the project goes away and we no longer have it. So I think the thing to, to focus on is what a good thing this is going to be for our community. This is going to be huge to have that. The goals of the development are to have new jobs, new retail. Those are the most common things that I hear people say that they want in our community. So we should do everything in our power to make sure that we get that. The new interchange is also going to be great because it will, it will solve some of our issues with traffic flow. We won't have as much traffic backup on Pocatello Creek Road. It'll be better response time for emergency responders. I mean, there are just so many benefits for the community that will come from this new interchange. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lurick?
I agree with most of what has been said. I think that this development has the potential to bring a lot of opportunity and benefits to the community. One of the things that I think is a real positive is that it is kind of a self-contained development. So you would potentially work and live and go out to eat and shop all in one place. So that could have an environmental, a positive environmental impact. It makes it a walkable development where you wouldn't have to drive to go to all those things. So there are benefits. But on the other side, I would say getting public buy-in is important. I think that, I understand the need for some confidentiality when you're arranging a project, but I think if the public can buy into the project and support it, you're going to have a much more successful development. I do agree with Danny's comment too, that you can have both new development and revitalize Old Town. It doesn't have to be either or.
Thank you. Mr.?
Danny, I'd like a six-month timeline also because I haven't seen one. But Heidi, thanks for your comments about confidentiality because here's an example. Some information leaked out. The city of Chubbuck needed to buy some property there along High Line for a well. That property sold for $117,000 per acre, for that acre ground. That set the value on that ground for that property up there, which to the development in a tailspin. It has been around. There's been talk about the rumors, if you, if you listened, okay? Gary Moore oftentimes has said, I'm going to have to refer to Michael Orr because of his technical background. We've worked, I've worked hard to make sure on the engineering and project side that we try to do the very best we can. That's why I need to be on the council for the next four years to make sure this performs. We set a limit of $500,000 could be spent, no more. And I made that motion that it would not exceed $500,000.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Mr. Chitum? Mr. Chodery?
This is really one vehicle which would keep our fresh graduates from ISU to stay home. 70% of our fresh graduates are living Pocatello because there is not enough jobs for them to settle here. They're graduating from the computer classes. They're graduating from different other engineering classes, but they're not finding a compatible job. And when the businesses are coming in here, they're already bringing in people from outside or they're already hiring the experienced people. So this was...
Thank you. Oh my goodness. I apologize.
If Margaret would see, I would carry it on, but she saw and I'd be nice.
I am so sorry. I'm off on my timing, but I'm sure it will all spread out.
I should get, I should get one minute extra for being nice.
Mr. Conway?
I think it's important that we get back to the question. It's not about what sort of growth this project is going to be brought here. The question was about being dismissive of public input. I'd like to address the confidentiality agreement between the city and the developer. That lends itself to forgetting where this money came from. Tax dollars raised from the public should not be spent in private. You should have at least had the knowledge of where your funds were going before they were committed, if not having input on it.
Thank you. Any additional comment, Mr. Zundel?
No.
Mr. Wells?
I'm with Steve. Exactly what he said, I'd have said the same thing.
Ms. Adamson?
Yes, I wanted to respond to the comment about the public needing to have knowledge of funds before they're spent. The funds that the city and that the PDA have committed to this are not going to, to the development per se, but to the infrastructure. So that is exactly what, what public funds are for, is for things like roads out to the interchange. So that's my response to that.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
I would just make one real quick comment that I think sometimes it's an issue of perception. If there are things that can't be told to the public, then so be it. You can't tell them. But I think if people feel that they're not being included or that they're being dismissed, that can be a problem. So anything that we could do to make the people, whatever we can tell them, whatever information we can share and make the public feel that they're part of the project and that they have a voice, I think is important.
Thank you. Any additional?
Yeah. We continue to hear the rhetoric about transparency. For the most, I mean, it is transparent to the degree it can be, okay? We have open, we have help in us as ITD has them. We have meetings. The PDA is open to individuals. The $500,000 is going to come from our Water Department and possibly Street Department for infrastructure. There's fees and taxes, but they're not going to anybody but the city's work to do that growth and put down the pavement, asphalt, pipe.
Thank you. So this next question, now you'll see why I've been so poring over the papers. I'm trying to combine about four questions on economic development. Well, I'm sorry, about development in general. And so we'll go with two. The first question will start with Mr. Chodery. And the question is around the desire of the community to retain our unique characteristics with growth, reducing noise pollution, light pollution, emissions, and ensuring that we protect our air and water. And so with regard to that, what would you do to protect those, those assets that we value?
I'm a strong believer of solar energy. We have one monopoly, we have Idaho Power. Solar energy is something that we should all look into very seriously. And yes, I understand that a lot of us, we try not to believe, not to follow that route because of maybe the expenses or the cost or certain, I am losing the word. But anyway, this is where I would concentrate myself as well as clear, clean energy, to have as much solar energy possible related to our, into our city, into our community. See what we can do for our electricity, for our cars and use. We have a great program as a bicycle program once a year on the month of March. That really helps a lot of people health-wise as well as...
Thank you.
By the time I can understand what I'm talking about, you stop me. I have to understand myself before I can relate.
Mr. Conway? Mr. Conway?
This question is a lot of issues to address in 60 seconds. But I think the core is that development should start with the resources that we have. Economic development should start with maintaining and capitalizing on the assets that we have in our Old Town. I think there are many availabilities for the potential of an alternative energy market. The wind never stops blowing here. And we have a river that runs right through our city. Hydroelectricity is, is a big thing in Idaho Falls. I think we could have the potential to have something like that here. But again, the point is, is that for, for development, I think we need to utilize the resources that we have within our city.
Thank you. Mr. Zundel?
As we look at a number of the issues bringing economic growth into Pocatello, we don't necessarily need to destroy what we have. The site has already developed a film that is used for solar energy. The city has looked into the possibility of making their home solar field out by the airport. There are many issues of making Pocatello grow. We need to use all of our resources. And again, one of the biggest resources we have is that of Idaho State University. The kids coming out of that university have such wonderful ideas and ways to do things, but we don't keep them here. It's like we don't want them.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
I think Steve read my mind because my thoughts were the same thing, wind and water. As you drive to American Falls, as you're coming around the turn, you see the dairy and off in the distance in the farmland, you can see that wind farm that's there with the windmills that are already in place. That's a wonderful thing because we have an excess of wind that blows every day. And who knows how much money we can tap from that. And again, we have a river running right through our city that we can have hydroelectric applied in several different places to collect energy and to help us to be able to be self-sufficient just using what we have here, wind and water.
Thank you. Ms. Adamson?
Yes, I can appreciate the desire of the community to preserve our unique characteristics. And so I'd like to speak to that a little bit. I think it's very easy to be afraid of change. Change is scary. None of us, you know, usually like it. But it's important to remember that the people who come here with growth are going to be like-minded people to us. They're going to enjoy outdoor recreation. They're going to appreciate good family values. They wouldn't come here if they didn't think that that was important and if they didn't see value in that. It is important for us to do things to protect our air and water. A couple of the things that we have been doing with water in the city are, we just got done doing a upgrade to our wastewater treatment plant so that there's not so much phosphorus going into the river. So that's one thing that the city is currently working on. I've been out there and visited it and it's pretty neat to see how it goes through the UV filters instead of being treated with chemical like it used to in the past. Also, we've had the Portniff River study, which will...
Thank you. Ms. Lurick?
Yes. So I think that one of the main things that I would like to focus on if I get elected is, is responsible development that at the same time protects our natural resources as well as maintains or preserves our unique character. And I think those things can work together. They don't have to be mutually exclusive. So I'm part of groups that are already working on protecting our water and also trying to move us towards a clean energy future. So those are things that are already happening that I think we can focus on. People have mentioned wind and water, but we have another very large resource that's natural, that is in plentiful supply, and that's the sun. So switching to, you know, wind energy, solar energy, also maybe more environmentally friendly vehicles. The city could look at the buses and the city vehicles that we use, biofuels, different things like that, electric vehicles. Those are all ways that we can work on protecting our air and water.
Thank you. Mr. Orr?
Oh, I wish I had the time. I wish. We had a group, a big solar company that was going to come to the airport, okay? It was ready to go, but it got blocked by our good friends at the North and the FAA now supposedly. So we have the opportunity, but we've got to define where we're going to do these things. We need to have a plan of where businesses are going to go. For wind farms, okay? Yeah, the wind blows in Idaho. Go to Nebraska or Kansas where Chitum's from, you'll find out what wind is like. To have wind turbines, you have to have a constant 17 mile per hour wind flow, okay? So that's, that's a little breezy, okay? We continue to look at these. It's not that we haven't looked at them, okay? You have to be the timing, the place, and it has to make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chitum?
Well, you know, the question was addressing retaining what we have. And I think we can do that through our planning and zoning. We've got, we've got a system in place to regulate what happens in this community and where it happens. And those standards are something that can be changed. If the community wants them changed, you can petition the council, talk to the council and the mayor's office, talk to P and Z, and see if the standards need to be updated to the 21st century. If they don't fit what we need or who we are, then perhaps we need to take a look at those. But zoning, you know, one other comment real quick. Talk about hydroelectric power through the Portniff. Have they looked at the Portniff most years in August? It's about six inches deep and two feet wide when it goes to the channel. There isn't enough water to support hydroelectric power most of the year in the Portniff River. I'm a part of Valley Pride and we're working on the project down by the Pocatello Charter School to try and develop a project to restore the Portniff.
Thank you. We have another question on economic development. We have another question on economic development, but you have a chance if you care to make additional comments on this. Mr. Chodhary, Mr. Conway, Mr. Zandell?
Going to the hydroelectric, the mayor of American Falls, Amy Wynn, tried to develop one in American Falls on the Snake River. There are such issues and problems with this that she couldn't get it to go through. We need to look at all the alternatives that we have, not just a few of them.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Mr. Wells, Adamson, Ms. Lurick?
I did want to just make one quick point. I think this is where really strengthening our partnership with ISU could come into play. ISU has the S-Tech program. It's a, you know, they study clean and renewable energy or alternative energies. So it's a great way where we could partnership and figure out good solutions for our city.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Eleven CFS is what typically runs through the Portniff River in August. Eleven CFS. You get two cows that want to drain their bladder at the same time, and that'll be about the equivalent. Don't want to be so graphic, but you'll remember that one, eh?
Anything to add to that?
Not to that. Don't touch that with a tinsel.
Okay, that's smart, Rick. All right. So this question will go first to Mr. Conway. There were a number of questions. The audience is interested in learning what your visions are for Pocatello in the next five, 10, 20 years, and so they also are interested in hearing balancing economic development with the current tax burden on taxpayers here. So the question is, what opportunities does a city have to capitalize on economic development in the next 12 months? What role could ISU play in this? And how do you grow without giving away too much, such as large reductions in city utility or property valuation?
It's a heavy question. In the next 12 months, I think is really where we're going to start laying all of the groundwork. It's where we will begin to refocus on developing at the edges of our city and bringing the focus back to the core of our city. I would bring up again the potential for partnerships with ISU that we have a resource in, within the city, that's here to provide that sort of research that's needed for these development projects, that's needed for these partnerships, and that produces a capable workforce for our economy here in the city to grow. Over five, 10, and 20 years, I hope that we see a lot of big change, mainly in really how we treat our infrastructure that we have here and how we develop responsibly.
Thank you. Mr. Zandell?
We have a number of industries that would love to be back in Pocatello. Some of them we have chased out in years past. They would be willing to come back and work with city council, ISU, and other people develop programs and needs of this area. In the next 20 years, I see Pocatello growing by 15 to 30% because of the changes that have made, because of Northgate, because of businesses that wish to be here. Once again, Pocatello can be the gate of the Northwest.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
That was such a heavy question. Would you please repeat it for me? I couldn't hear you.
I will. The audience is interested in your vision for the city for the next five, 10, 20 years. And they also have some concerns about balancing growth with the current burden on taxpayers. So their question is, questions, what opportunities does the city have to capitalize on economic development in the next 12 months? What role could ISU play in it? And how do you grow without giving away too much, such as large city utility or property valuation reductions?
What we need to do in the next five years, whatever, is open the lines of communication. Again, one of the things that I see is the communication between citizens to city hall doesn't exist. City hall to the county, that doesn't exist, city hall. We don't have city council members that are checking in on department heads in the city. The lines of communication, we need to open those lines up. We need to design and develop planning, and once we've designed it, developed it, we have to follow through. And that's the biggest value that I see, is that the planning and development is made, and then there's no follow-through to make sure it's executed, so that Pocatello does get an equitable rate of return on their investment on whatever project it is.
Thank you. Ms. Adamson?
Okay. In the next five, 10, and 20 years, I just see Pocatello continuing on the path of progress. We've got so much good going on right now, and that's one reason why I want to stay on the council, to make sure that that continues. You asked what role ISU could play. One thing that I think is very important is that we need to work with ISU to make sure that we have the talent available for the jobs in companies that come in and also for our existing businesses who want to be able to have workers that are available and trained to do the jobs that they need to do. During the budget process, our council does work with the departments to set aside capital to be used for future needs, so I think that's an important point to make. And then I just wanted to quickly respond to checking in on departments in the city and the comment that no city council members currently do that. I see a department head right here.
Thank you. Ms. Lurick?
I agree with one thing. This is a lot to unpack in 60 seconds, so I will do my best. But I would say that there's two things I think development should focus on. There should be a balance between new development, you know, sort of developing out from Pocatello, but also on focusing on revitalizing our downtown area. Again, I think those things are not exclusive. We can do both, but we should focus on both of those. I think as far as balancing gross, growth, excuse me, with our tax burden, there's a variety of mechanisms that we can use to support large businesses as well as small businesses. There's things like TIF districts and tax incentives and credits. There's low-interest loans or no-interest loans. So I think we should look at all the mechanisms available to support the different, a variety of different kinds of businesses. ISU's role, research is a really important thing, providing good information. The College of Business can provide consulting and planning. We can also provide workforce training. Sorry.
Ms. Orr?
ISU is a great university. The business department ranks among one of the best. Pharmacy, engineering, our businesses have grown. Idaho Central Credit Union is growing so fast that they, they're hiring psych majors to do business. So as department heads, you talk to the department head and ask if they haven't had one of the council members in there talking to them. As far as keeping the burden off of taxpayers, the statistics show that we have to have 3% to 7% growth every year just to maintain the status quo with the cost of increasing goods, okay? We need to have a plan, and we're working on it. We've got one. You look, I don't want to repeat what was said last night, but you look at who's coming and working in Pocatello and the type of jobs. They're much, much better. They pay better, and we've got great people. We've got a great staff within the city. The employees do a great job for us. But again, it's more than a full-time job sometimes trying to get to the agenda items.
Thank you. Mr. Cheatham?
Well, the next five to 10 years, you know, this Northgate development's going to take a long time to completely build out. This isn't going to happen in the next 24 months. There aren't enough contractors in the state of Idaho to build that thing in the next 24 months. I've been trying to get a driveway port for the last three months, and I can't find a concrete contractor to do that because they are so busy already building homes in this city. One of my concerns is South Fifth, and I think that's a part of town that needs some help. And I don't know what to do there, but I hope the Northgate development doesn't draw resources, city resources, away from other parts of Pocatello that may need help. Yeah, I think Old Town's going to hurt when the Northgate development happens. Temporarily, I think they're going to suffer, and then it will come back. They've already developed a unique character to Old Town, and I think that will persist in the long run. ISU's role, they, along with the unions, the school district, can feed skill sets into the employers that are becoming the town.
Thank you. Mr. Chodhary?
I don't know how we can see five, 10, 15 years where we cannot see tomorrow very What happened in Las Vegas was very sad. People were there to have fun, enjoy, but a lot of people had lost their loved ones within minutes. So what my intention, my attention is always today. When people, they ask me, "How you doing, Sanju?", I tell them, "I woke up again." It is important that we connect ISU, the city, I N L, and the Economic Development Corporation of ours, all four of them together. When all four of them together come together, and the community, the fifth one, then we can talk about growth. We can talk about a healthy environment. Our downtown needs some attention. Yes, we all support downtown. I have my office in downtown. I really want to see downtown do really much better for our people so there's attraction. And I have my...
Thank you. Any additional comments? Mr. Conway? Mr. Zandell? Mr. Wells? Ms. Adamson?
Yes, I'd like to just finish my rebuttal. So I had the opportunity recently to be out with the streets department. It was great to get out there and see exactly what the process is. I even got the chance to drive the paving machine for a little while, so that was very exciting. And I also see Mr. Horace here from our police department. I've had the opportunity to shadow along with some members in our police department, and so I just would like to make that comment that we do have council members that make an effort and get out there and...
Thank you. Any additional comments? Ms. Lurick? Mr. Orr?
The data from the Department of Labor, okay? Job creation, Bennett County is number one in Idaho. Job applicants have dropped. Job availability is down. There's 250 more, 20 more jobs than there's applicants here in Bennett County, okay? The average wage has gone up. We have worked hard. I sold my business so I could put in the time because it takes a lot of hours down here and out and around town. We've done it, we do it, and we want to continue to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Cheatham, any additional? Mr. Zandell, you will be the first to have concluding... Oh, Mr. Chodhary, sorry. Did you have additional comments?
Well, I would love to continue.
Let's do this all night, eh?
How many more seconds do I have? So downtown is really very, very near and dear to me. I started my business over there in 2006, and when I would talk to people about coming down downtown, they would say, "No, I live in Chubba, it's too far away." So we need to bring in some kind of attraction in downtown. We all, as a community, need to come together and find a way how we can get our downtown to the next level. We just cannot blame or cannot ask, "Oh, our downtown is this, our downtown sucks." We have to work it out together. Stephanie Palagi alone cannot do it. We all have to bring in together. In a Rotary Club in 2008, we are stopped already, okay?
So our concluding remark... I'm back on the job.
This should be a one all-day deal from 10:00 in the morning till 6:00, and lunch and dinner provided.
We'll begin our concluding remarks with Mr. Zandell. You have one minute, and please summarize up as you wish.
Okay. In the closing moments of this, I would once again say if we can bring Idaho State, the citizens, the business and women that are in Pocatello, as long as leaders, we will grow positive. There are many examples of that. The Mini Dome was put here by the students raising their fees. We have the most famous high school activity called Simp Lots worldwide. We have a health and wellness to benefit all of us. And finally, with the leadership that we've had, we see this Northgate starting to come together. If we will start seeing the glass as half-full rather than half-empty, then Pocatello will regain being the gate city.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Yes, I would like to inject a little bit of an energy, a little bit of motivation to the city council, which I feel that there's a lack of. I will be able to devote more energy, more time to being connected with the people, to being connected with the other city council members, to work together with them so that we can move forward in a sustainable future for Pocatello. Unfortunately, tonight, the gender card was brought up, and I don't want to bring up my gender card. I want the best person to be elected for the city of Pocatello, and thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Adamson?
Yes, I would just like to bring up a few bullet points, and the first one is that I am a champion of economic prosperity and responsible community growth. I will work to present a positive image of Pocatello. I get along with people, and I facilitate teamwork with other elected officials. I bring a valuable perspective to our city government, and I would appreciate your support. And I want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Lurick?
Like Heidi, I'm going to go through a quick list because I want to make sure I get it in, but the things that I would like to focus on if I am elected, responsible development that is based on long-range strategic planning, transparency, accountability, and accessibility, being available to all citizens of Pocatello, sound fiscal management of our taxpayer dollars, and strengthening partnerships, particularly with ISU and with local labor. I'd also like to really focus on fostering an environment in the city that encourages all public servants, whether they're employees or elected officials, to use their qualifications and expertise to serve the citizens of Pocatello. I have several skills. I'm actually a trained negotiator. I'm a researcher by training. I care very much about Pocatello. I will listen to all citizens and address their needs and concerns, and I think this is a wonderful place to live with a lot of potential and opportunity, and I think we can make it even better.
Thank you. Mr. Orr?
The mayor, I thought Lorax had moved in there with all these job discussions, but he's back here somewhere. We've worked hard. No one person does anything, give you an example, for transparency. One of the things that concerned me is when you came to the city hall and asked what somebody made, you didn't get what they made because it didn't include longevity. For three years, we've been working to try to get a consensus, to work with employees to get the longevity put into the base pay and move forward. We finally got that done. It takes work. It takes effort. It takes sweat. It takes energy, and there's plenty of it here. We've also got the consensus now to fast-track a hands-free cellphone ordinance within the city of Pocatello. There's not a person in this room that has not been impacted by seeing somebody come to an intersection texting or talking or whatever. We're going to get that done. That's why, because this city is a great place to live, great people.
Mr. Cheatham?
Well, to recap, I've lived here for 40 years, and I feel like I know this town. I've worked in a lot of different areas. I've met thousands of its residents. I feel like I can do this council some good and the community some good. I'm pro-business. I believe Pocatello has to grow, and this Northgate development that's coming is the opportunity that we've waited for, for a long, long time. I'm a full employment advocate also. I believe there's a place for everyone in the workforce, whether it's an $8-an-hour job or an $18-an-hour job, there's someone with the skill set for that job. I support Idaho State University, students, staff, faculty. I retired from ISU Credit Union, and I spent a lot of time the last 11 years on that campus working directly with every segment at the community up there. The university is an important part of Pocatello and will be an essential part of the future. I'm also a champion for Pocatello. We have great people and a culture. I want to see the city continue to grow and prosper. Thanks again to the League for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Chodhary?
Thank you very much, Margaret. Thank you very much, all of you, for being here this evening. I would like to see, as everybody else has mentioned, the growth in Pocatello, and we will measure it after I see myself in the council. You will see the difference. I speak about seven different languages. I don't know if it's going to help in the marketplace or not. I don't know. But I will do my best to bring it over here and see what we can do for our children. I would like to keep our children back home. They're leaving this place for their jobs, and they're leaving their parents, their brothers and sisters, their grandparents, because they're looking for a better job. I would like to see our zoo in the next level because our zoo has, I don't know how many of you has been there lately, needs some attention. We don't have locals going over there, forget about the tourists. We don't have any children going there for any educational purposes over there, and we need them to go there and understand that. I would like to work with Idaho State University very closely. Our Indian student population has gone down to 0... Our Indian student population has gone down to only seven. It used to be 93 about six years back. Why, I do not know, but I do know the answers.
Thank you. And with the final word this evening, Mr. Conway?
Can I finish the final words? No.
We've been answering a lot of tough questions up here, some of them actually 20 questions. You've heard what we want to do, what we want to see with this city, but what I think is more important is that each question that was asked tonight is a deeply important issue to the person who submitted it. And these issues do not cease to be important the minute that we step off the dais tonight. And come November 7th, I would strongly urge you to vote for the candidate who takes that philosophy with them into their term as a city councillor. Thank you.
Thank you. With a few concluding remarks, point of interest, six questions. So that's why we move so quickly. And so if your question was not answered, please, I'm sure you will have the opportunity to speak with candidates. Thank you all for participating, the audience and candidates, this evening. The last day to pre-register for voting is October 13th. Idaho allows same-day registration, so you can register at the polls. Early walk-in voting starts October 10th through November 3rd from 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, and that's in the next to the Bennet County Courthouse in 141 North Sixth Street. And on October 27th, that is your last day to apply for mail-in absentee ballots. Please vote on Tuesday, November 7th between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Bring a government-issued photo ID, or you can complete a personal identification affidavit right there. And again, you can register that day. To get involved in the League, there's information on the table at the front, or you can go to our Facebook page. And we are very grateful for your participation tonight. We hope you leave better informed about the candidates you have before you. Thank you.